Hello. Huh? I don't play it.
Oh, you don't play?
Yeah.
What's your first name again?
Carl.
Carl, that's right. I remember as Carl. No, this is my, this is my door sign. Yeah, thank you for, for that deluge of emails. I, I haven't even looked at the application yet. So I've talked, I've talked to the applicants, but I haven't gone through, through you.
Tom, try giving it my voice.
Alright.
You guys want glass water?
No, thanks.
Um, nothing.
So how'd you get stuck on my internet?
I think so.
Yeah? Nice, nice.
I don't even know why I do not get stuck on here. I just like to stay home.
Doing what?
If I'm not having a, a heart attack. Or a kid. Or coming here, or just coming out because...
It's some, it's something to do, right?
Something to do.
Who, who's the, who's the planning from, from Waukesha? The other planning? Oh. Karen, right, his tag is right there. So...
We have a forum.
I, I think we can, I think we can move ahead without him here at this first meeting. It's probably fine. We're not making any decisions. We're not taking any votes besides a, a chairperson. We have a quorum for each regardless. We'll have three out of four. No, 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 no. But, but yeah, maybe. I don't know. No, he's, he can't make it. I, I'm not in charge, so...
Microphones are on.
We, Karen, if you wouldn't mind just opening the meeting, talking about the posting and then...
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Shared Services Committee meeting to order. This is a meeting with the village of Vernon, the village of Waukesha, and the town of Maguannago.
Joint, joint planning meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joint Planning Service Committee with the villages of Vernon, Waukesha, and the town of Maguannago. At this point, a, a, as you can see, that we're located at the village, at the village of Waukesha, Village Hall. At this point, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and cite the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to note for the record that the agenda was posted in all conformance to the open meetings law. And at this point on the agenda, I would ask the village of Vernon to appoint a, a chairman to its committee. By motion.
By motion? I'll make a motion and we appoint Fred Mahalik.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion fails.
Karen, if I could just interrupt quickly. Is there, is there a chairperson designated for each community or for each?
There is for us.
For each planning group?
Yeah, there is for, each individual, well, Waukesha and Vernon have to do their election. Maguannago has, they have their own internal, they have a chair, but there isn't a chair per se on the agenda of this committee. So I think what, what was going to happen is the two, the village of Vernon and village of Waukesha have to elect their chair. And then what we're going to do is turn it over to you as a planner to facilitate the planning discussion between all three communities.
Sure.
Is there a second to the motion, Dan?
I'll say it.
Oh, you don't? Is there any further nominations? No, it has to come from you. There are none? Dan, congratulations, Dan Nowak. Village of Waukesha? Congratulations, Mr. Stagler. And there, therefore, I just wanted to state, just for the record, that on the far left is Dan, Commissioner Dan Nowak from the village of Vernon, trustee commissioner Fred Mahalik from the village of Vernon, Bob Stagler from the village of Waukesha, and Tom Kulinski, he's not here at this time, he's also the representative from the village of Waukesha. We have Mr. Peter, president, excuse me, Chairman Peter Tapchewski from the town of Maguannago right here, and trustee, not trustee, he is a supervisor, Lyle Boucher from the town of Maguannago, representing each community. Sean Malarky is the planner for the village of Waukesha and the village of Vernon. And at this point, we turn it over to Sean in regards to the planning services for all three communities.
Thank you. I don't have much to talk about today, except I just wanted to share some boundary maps of the joint planning areas, maybe go through the, the future land use plans for each communities to give everyone a sense of what the land uses are, plan, existing land uses and planned land uses in some of the joint planning areas. We can, we can touch on zoning for each of the areas if there's particular questions. So I'll start with the map, so everyone gets acclimated. Basically showing all three communities. And so this map is sort of centered on the village of Vernon, showing in this gray, whitedish color here. The, the joint planning area for the village of Vernon and the village of Waukesha is the, the dark blue boundary. It's basically a half mile on each side of Town Line Road. This might make it easier to see if I kind of flash it on and off, which would be... So everybody gets a sense of, it excludes the, the areas in the village of Big Bend, obviously. The village of, of Waukesha and town of Maguannago joint planning area is, is here, just at the northeast corner of the town of Maguannago, on the southwest corner of the village of Waukesha. And again, it's a, it's a half mile distance between the two communities' boundaries. And then finally, the town of Maguannago and the village of Vernon, it's, here's the boundary between the two communities, and this is a half mile extent around the, the, the boundary between the two. And I'll flash that one and give you a sense of, oh, that's the wrong one. And so there's a little bit of overlap here between the three communities. So I, I guess I'll just start, um... I'll take a look. We'll start with the village of Vernon's land use plan. And so if you look, here's the town of Maguannago on the west and Vernon's on the east. Maybe a little hard to see, but I've outlined the joint planning area in this, sort of the pink color. Goes up, again, this is only within Vernon, and then this is sort of the dividing line between the communities, but then it also extends up here in, for the, for the joint boundary or joint planning area between Vernon and Maguannago. And again, here's the half mile distance between Waukesha and Vernon. And so I'll just start in the, in the northeast corner of the village of Vernon, talk about some of the land uses. This is basically the far east, far northeast. This is National Avenue. There's, there's a bunch of existing development in the area. We have, we have some planned commercial uses along, along National Avenue. As you go to U and National Avenue, the northeast corner, there's some transition uses, some business residential transition uses. What that basically means is that it's, it's likely long-term commercial, but extra care is given as, as zonings happen, according to the comprehensive plan, and to make sure that it's, whatever happens there is, is compatible with surrounding residential development and proper buffers going into place. The yellow area is rural residential, which requires five acre density. Most of these parcels are already divided up and, and with existing homes on them, so won't likely be further developed in the current land use plan. As you move further west, in Vernon, an existing subdivision completely developed, and you have the village of Big Bend, and then you have Big Bend Road. On the east side is what's, what we have is, is medium density resi, I'm sorry, it's, I think we changed that. To low density residential, which is 20,000 square feet to 1.49 acres per dwelling unit. These categories are consistent with the county's definitions for the land uses as well, and I believe Waukesha's also are. So on the east side is low density residential. Most of these parcels are already developed with residential use. There may be an opportunity to divide one or two of these lots based on those densities in the future. On the west-hand side of the road, we have a mixed-use business park, couple of small lots with some existing development on them, with some potential for commercial down the, down the, down the road as the village of Big Bend may develop around. At the southwest corner of Skyline and 164, there's, there's a currently vacant or farmland that, that could be developed for commercial purposes in the future. The boundary is sort of a, a stream that comes through there, a natural divide. Then we have suburban density residential, a little further west, and that category ranges from 1.5 acres to 4.9 acres per dwelling unit. It's basically a combination of Waukesha County's two suburban density, one and suburban density two. It's the full range of, of density for that. And so there may be some opportunity for some land division here in the future. Moving further west, existing subdivisions, there's a couple of parcels, couple of larger parcels that could be developed under the low density residential scenario on the border of, between, this map was done when we, when we were still a town, but village of Waukesha and the village of Vernon, there are some larger parcels. There was recently a, a, a one, five acre land division, or a, I don't remember if it was five or less. But a land division on the west-hand side, there's no current intent for development, but it certainly could be developed according to the land use plan. Moving further west across Oakdale, County XX, there is land planned for suburban density residential, some low density residential. This land is actually currently in the process of being platted. Preliminary plat was approved. We're working toward the final plat for, it's called Pheasant Ridge or Pheasant Run? Pheasant? Pheasant Run. They cha, they did change the name on that one. And so what's, what's going to happen here, it's basically this whole area will be thirty single-family lots that extends Pheasant Drive and then it connects back out to, to Meyer's Drive. And then as you, as you get west of that, the area is essentially Vernon Marsh, which is a combination of environmental corridor and wetland and, and flood plain. So that, that takes care of the, sort of the land uses in Vernon between the village of Waukesha and the village of Vernon, and as you go, the land uses between the town of Maguannago and the village of Vernon. Again, it's all Vernon Marsh until you get down to, um, just south of, of the railroad tracks, which is rural residential, which is the five acre density, some existing developed subdivisions under low density residential. And then the, a couple more interesting things happen on National Avenue, County Highway ES. Heaven City is planned for commercial, currently exists as commercial with some, a couple multifamily units, which is, which is basically a, there's a tavern, some multifamily uses there. There was a restaurant that's currently going to be used or is in the process of being converted to a, an antique business, an, an auction business that, that we recently approved. Across the street, there's a, there's a contractor for roofing business planned commercial. And so further, further east, the, the Vernon Lutheran Church. And so there's some limited commercial development and other development on National Avenue there. And so that does it for Vernon's land uses. I'll go over to Waukesha's land uses, just north of Vernon, start at the northeast corner. The yellow represents suburban density, this, this pale yellow, suburban density two residential, which is the three acre to 4.9 acres per dwelling unit. The, the darker yellow is low density residential, same as Vernon's, which is 20,000 square feet to 1.49 acres per dwelling unit. And so there is some potential for some future development here at the southeast corner of, of the village of Waukesha. This is an existing built-out subdivision, some more vacant land for potential for development. The development here, there's basically, it looks like there's vacant land, but this is all area that's environmental corridor and outlots for the subdivision to the north. As you go further west across 164, there's a small commercial node that's planned there. To the north is Green Man Landscaping, and then recently approved in the southern portion was a rezoning to allow self-storage units. And so that's been approved, but building permits have not yet been issued for that, for that business. Further west, existing subdivisions, there is Girl Scout Camp, Blue Heron Girl Scout Camp, west of that. Existing development, the green is all environmental corridor, so there's pockets of limited development here. There's some potential for limited residential development south of Town Line. And then you get this brown color is the ag category. The ag category allows for five acre density, five acres per dwelling unit. Most of this is currently zoned A1 agriculture in, in the village of Vernon, and that requires a 20 acre minimum lot size unless it's rezoned to something else that will allow five acre density according to the land use plan. Could be, could be planned unit development as, as well. Across, further across Oakdale Drive, there's another larger pocket of existing farm that is, has some potential for some limited residential development in the future, but no plans as far as I know of. And then we have a large swath of environmental corridor, and then again, a couple other pockets of agricultural planned land with, with limited development. And then finally, though I'm not an expert on the town of Maguannago's land use plan, so just west of Vernon and southwest of the village of Waukesha, here's the half mile boundary in, 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 in Maguannago. I'm not going to be able to tell you much about this, except kind of give you a, a sense of the overall land use categories. And if one of you two want to chime in, or if I miss something, or you want to make a point, please feel free. So we have some medium density residential plant here at the south portion. There's some conservancy area surrounding the Fox River. As you go further north, there's the existing subdivision, which is developed out. The green is also conservancy. We have some suburban density residential just north of that, just south of the Fox River. I don't know how much of that is developed or how much is potential for it to be developed, but there might be some at that point. And then we get to state lands going further north from there. All Vernon Marsh, yep. That's easy. Vernon Marsh, up, up further north until you get to, what do we got? Area's planned for future acquisition, I think it said, by, by state. You don't get, there's no real opportunity for, for additional development until you get to the far northern portion, just south of the village of Waukesha, west of Vernon, where you have some of the, of the suburban density and the agricultural residential density at 3.2 acres per dwelling unit. So a lot of this is already developed, but there are a few pockets for some potential for residential development. Is that fair to say? Okay. This is River Road, yeah. So I just wanted to provide an introduction of, of, you know, this is what the plans look like in the, in the joint planning areas. And I mentioned a couple of the current developments or the ongoing, upcoming developments in those areas. Does anybody have anything to, to add or want to speak on anything that I just mentioned?
In the villages of Vernon, Waukesha, or the town of Maguannago that clash with each other's plan?
Not necessarily clash with each other's plan. Certainly the, the densities might vary between the two. You know, for instance, in the village of Waukesha, you have suburban density residential and some, some low density residential. And if I flip to Vernon's plan, there's a mix, you know, it's, it's kind of flip-flopped. You have low density residential on the east side, and then you get some rural residential on the west side. And so I don't necessarily think there are going to be a conflict. I, I'd be more concerned with conflicts if it was, you know, planned commercial next to certain things, but there's, there's always opportunities for buffer there as well. And so there's just, there's, 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 there's good possibility for, from a joint planning perspective to make sure we, we, we just, we coordinate our development, we coordinate our access, we make sure that any changes to the comprehensive plans are in line with the, the neighboring communities in terms of thoughts and, and, and vision going forward. So I, there, there's no glaring issues here yet that, that I can see that need to be addressed immediately. But that doesn't mean issues can occur if we don't do it, you know, together jointly.
How do we handle future changes to any of the communities? Do we have to have coordinated effort or approvals from other communities or?
Um, I would think, I would think the best approach in, for land use plan changes in these joint planning areas would be to, before we, we, before we amend our individual maps, that we run it through the committee, make sure it makes sense, and, and then if the committee agrees, then bring it back to our local communities for changes to the comp plan. I don't necessarily think rezonings are an issue as long as it's, as long as it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, but the long-term planning and changes of the comprehensive plan should be brought to the committee first.
What things, what types of things would have to be jointly approved or looked at? Certified surveys or subdivisions or?
None, none of that stuff is laid out in the cooperative plans. I'm thinking the, the, the idea was just to make sure that the planned densities and the land uses are in agreement. Yeah, so that... Right, right. For, for Maguannago, yeah. There's, you know, there's, there's, as I mentioned, there is limited commercial development planned in Vernon and, and Waukesha and, and this, in this area and a couple of pockets. But any changes to that would require cooperation between the municipalities. Right, yep. Take a vote on it and, and take a look at it. Right. What, and the, the idea for this first, this first kickoff meeting isn't to make any decisions on where we see the conflicts are, or, I mean, it's a, it's a great question, or, or what the changes would be. Those kind of questions about, well, what's the purpose and what are we actually reviewing are, are good. I think the idea is to basically set a regular, and that's, that may be the next agenda item, set ongoing meeting dates, and then others will pop up as need be as changes to the plans would, would occur. So if nobody has any other questions, that's all I have for introduction to the land uses.
Is it possible, Sean, to get copies of the plan for each community?
Sure, that would be, that would be easy enough to do, sure. They, they were, they were in there, but it'd be, it'd be, if, if we have an email list, I can just shoot out an email to everybody, and you have it handy.
And certainly if, if individual communities have questions for their individual boards or, you know, to go back to them, and they can always bring it back to this joint planning committee. But as land use goes, are all communities are notified of, of any amendments to a land use plan?
Definitely notified, but yeah, we, we would want to make sure that we reconvene, you know, prior to that.
According to this though, Sean, all we have to worry about though is the, the half mile area from border to border, correct? Nothing else has to be brought to this committee?
That is the joint planning area.
Alright.
I think the intent was always to keep an open dialogue and good communication between all three communities in regards to land use and planning.
Right. This is, this is a more pointed way to make that happen.
Right.
So the idea of cooperation was always there. It was always in the comprehensive plans in terms of cooperating and, and convening. But this is, this is a, this is a focused way to just make sure that it occurs between our boarders.
So does the committee have any idea when you'd like to meet again? Do you want to discuss that? Do you want to discuss that?
I was just going to say, I guess two of us can't do that, huh? I thought we could, my thought was once a year for sure, and then as needed. If we have issues coming up that are changing, then we can meet in between, or I don't know if anybody feels we have to meet more often or not, I don't know.
Once per year and when there's issues that come up related to land use planning or changes to the comp plan? Right.
Is there any thought as to when that one meeting per year should be?
Probably after the election.
Oh, all right, that's great, yeah. So, or about December, January?
The next, yeah, the local elections.
Local elections, you're speaking, yeah.
So should we tell if we say May, and then when, as it gets closer, we can send out meeting dates?
Doing some major land use amendments, obviously, we'd bring the committee.
Then we'll meet before, right.
Right.
Karen, do you have the emails of the appropriate people? My point is, if, let's say there's a reason to meet, that an email could be sent out to everybody?
Oh, absolutely.
That would notify them?
And and that will occur too when we send the land use maps out.
Okay.
You'll see from Sean.
You want to be careful because as individuals, you don't want to email the whole group or important forms.
No, I agree. That's why it's coming.
Yeah.
Yep.
Karen, if you could send me the list of everyone's emails, I'll send the maps out, and then everybody has them individually, just don't reply to all and.
Would you gentlemen like to adjourn?
I make a motion.
On the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, you are adjourned, gentlemen.
Yeah, that's a start.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Hearing none, you are adjourned, gentlemen.
Peter, are you gonna?
You can call.
Oh, okay. At this point in time, I will call the Shared Services Committee between the villages of Vernon and Waukesha and Town of Maguano to order. It is seven oh five PM, and we are in the Village of Waukesha on September fourteenth. It's, as I said, seven oh five. The committees have already done the pledge of allegiance, so I'll just do the roll call. For the Town of Maguano, we have Chairman Peter Chacheski and Supervisor Lyle Boucher. From the Village of Waukesha, we have Mr. David, Trustee David German and Trustee Jerry Durr. From the village.
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael.
No worries.
Sorry, Michael.
Just wanted to get into the record.
From the Village of Vernon, for the Village of Vernon and Waukesha would be trustee Gary Wildy and trustee Jim Sloney. And for the Town of Maguano, it is trustee Jim Sloney and trustee Lorraine Dashick for representing those different communities. We have a split on the Shared Services Committee.
You said Town of Maguano?
Town of Maguano is Boucher and Chacheski. Vernon is, for Town of Maguano, would be Dashick.
Oh, the other one?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so. And I just wanted the committees to know that the agenda was posted in your full compliance with the open meeting law.
What were the names from Vernon again?
Vernon for the, Gary Wildy and Jim Sloney would be for Waukesha, and for the Town of Maguano would be Jim Sloney and Lorraine Dashick.
I was asking about Vernon?
Well, for Vernon, it's Jim Sloney and Gary Wildy for Waukesha, and for the Town of Maguano is Jim Sloney, Lorraine Dashick. We have two members to each committee.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Just for the record, Jim Sloney, I'm also on the one for Big Bend. So we're covering all three, you guys.
So at this point, the Village of Vernon needs to nominate a chair for the Waukesha-Vernon Committee?
I'll nominate Jim.
You don't need to second it. So Jim, congratulations, you're, and for Village of Vernon, for Town of Maguano, Village of Vernon, is there any nominations for a chair?
For what?
Jim, you want to?
I'll do that one too.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Village of Waukesha, do you need to elect a chairperson?
I'll nominate Michael Durr.
Congratulations, Michael. All right. Peter, I'm going to let you lead the discussion. I ask you to please lead the discussion on shared services between the, all the communities.
Again, as part of the agreement, we need to vote for the previous towns of Waukesha and Vernon, becoming incorporated municipalities, to, to, to set these committees to look at shared services, and not necessarily, in order with all of the services that each of the, now doing this offer. I can say on behalf of the common, the, 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 the,
And it's surprising when you look at those lists included in the documents submitted to the state, how many, how much sharing we already do. You know, we're already aware of Navis and backup for police calls and things like that, but we're both wealthy on that. So, you know, this is an opportunity to think about it in bigger terms perhaps where you can cut the administrative, the administrative overhead and to, you know, sharing more of the services.
I think that's the main purpose for this kind of a committee. So, you know, so I think that's a good, good plan. I have a list of all the services that Vernon is currently giving, and of course, the ones you mentioned. And last week, we talked with Big Bend, and obviously, the top ones are just like what you said earlier, sir, you know, fire, police, and, what was he on, fire? Oh, yeah, no, the one he said, it was paramedics. I just kind of rolled that in with with the police, but we did have to separate it up. Vernon, as an example, has a plethora of paramedics. And so we'll undoubtedly be working close with Big Bend on that because they don't have so many. And they're going to ultimately end up relying on our services. When we figure out how, you know, what the costs are, you know, to us so that we can give that to them and they can compare that to what, however they're running their shop now.
Interesting topic, fire and EMS because we are already sharing a lot of those services. But, and we, the Town of Maguano anyway, has contracted beyond mutual aid and auto aid with certain communities where we have intercept agreements. And, you know, that kind of thing can be expanded. It benefits each community.
Yeah, with Big Bend, that's one of the ones that was, we're interested in, is getting involved in the intercepts more with them, because right now, they go to Maguano, I think, first, which, no offense, we're gonna go, folks, but not necessarily logical when we're right there. You know what I mean? So, you know, we've talked to them about that, and, and again, no decisions were made on anything. You know, we all have to go, go back and, and see what our costs are and, you know, what it would cost, just like police, we don't have any. So, you know, we've been using Waukesha County for the coverage. Big Bend has a little bit more resources in that respect. They've got an active police department, and they supplement it with with the county. So we may be working through them for our coverage, you know, once we can crunch the numbers. I don't really know what we're, what our costs are today for the police coverage that we do have, but like Big Bend's coverage is even more, they cover more than we do.
And another topic you could throw in there is, I don't know where you stand, do you use county dispatch?
Yeah.
We need to also.
Yes, the. And I think we're moving ahead on that fire department going, the police will follow when they need new radios. I needn't go into the specifics on that, but if anybody hasn't and never has, make the opportunity and go take a tour of that county dispatch. It is phenomenal what they do up there. You would never want local dispatch again if you saw that.
Village of Waukesha contracts with Waukesha County, don't you?
We do.
And, and your coverage, do you know offhand what it is, Mike, or Dave, how many hours you own?
Do you mean for police?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about for dispatch.
Yeah, I know your dispatch is.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Oh, no, I don't know off the top of my head.
So we are one shift a day on a rotating schedule of four on, two off, five on, two off, four on, two off, five on, two off.
Does that work good for you?
Yes. We've done a number of things over the years that mostly cycled through changes due to budget reasons. There's been periods where we were five days a week, second shift, and we've done a few other things. In the last contract cycle that we did with them, we went to this rotating, four on, two off, five on, two off, to try to keep yourself from becoming stagnant in a certain pattern, so it works good that way. In addition to that, depending upon the contract that you sign with the county sheriff's department, you get into issues about how, how vehicles are charged to you and whether you get a dedicated vehicle and where the deputy starts. So we have a deputy that starts and ends their shift here, as opposed to starting and ending their shift at the courthouse. That wouldn't be a huge deal for us. We're not that terribly far away. But at the time, we had a preference as a board to have them start here. As you become, you know, the town of McGowanago, that becomes a bigger issue because you're farther away. So, but that's our schedule as it is now.
What's the cost of that? What's your, what's your contract cost you a year?
There is no one cost on that. The sheriff offers an à la carte type of arrangement where you can get as many men, as many hours, and where they start, they'll put, they'll put Village of Waukesha on their cars and on their uniforms if you want. And like I say, it's à la carte and the price goes up accordingly. Generally speaking, because of economy of scale, they can do things cheaper. And they have the administrative backup there, which is an advantage. Another thing, it's kind of a small thing, but it's a big thing. If you have a limited number of squad cars and a night patrolman cremates a deer, you're out a squad car, whereas the sheriff just rolls another one in.
I guess, pulling it all back together, you know, obviously, the opportunities that we can pull is to start evaluating things and starting to think outside of the box. Because, you know, every year, it's always getting harder and harder to pick the, you know, something that you're utilizing home for police. We have all of ours, and police department, and a fire, we have already a shared department with the village in McGowanago. It's something that, you know, that's costly, to ensure you are aware of it. And again, as we move forward, you know, we're not gonna be highs or, you know, someone gets an idea possibly, you know, one way of, you know, sharing the service and saving costs, or whatever the type of thing that I guess we should be looking at. Maybe we're very distracted from it. Right now, I have no, you know, suggestion as to any particular, you know, shared service. But again, as we move forward, those things come up, and sure, those opportunities will present themselves. So, as far as, you know, this particular community meeting, what do we consensus of how often do you wanna get together? Obviously, if, you know, someone gets an idea, wants to get together, discuss a matter, we could do that on demand. Otherwise, same way, once a year, or...
We should do the once a year, and starting out, we might, might as well do it on demand. It would be my two cents. We may find, we may very well find that we'll be meeting more than the other committee.
Yeah, I agree. We need to look at all avenues, including capital improvements. Is there a way that we can share a large, our large purchases together, either through salt, equipment, trucks? Or, we're in the process of looking right now at excavators, so we need to find out, you know, is it possible to go in together to purchase something like this, to kind of break down the overall general cost of... Those are avenues that I thought that would be kind of interesting to explore and look at in the future.
In Vernon, we had a list of the hot buttons because we're just starting to work on our budget now. And I don't, I don't know, you know, how far we're gonna get this year with actually implementing anything. As far as I'm concerned, of course, the sooner the better, you know, because it's gonna save us all money, I think. But we talked about police, fire, emergency rescue, EMT, paramedics. We talked a little bit about planning. DPW was kind of a big one, although we're actually already doing some with, with everybody anyhow. I don't know that there's a written agreement other than this little map that Karen got me that says where we pick up the plow or don't pick up the plow, where we can kind of square off the borders. You know, I don't know how current this is. That's one area that, of course, we could, we could improve upon, equipment, just like you were talking, and purchasing, you know, type of a thing. I'm not sure how well it works out if, like, we have a piece of equipment that you could use, whether we can just transfer that, you know, type of thing, you know, for, or rent it to you or something rather than having to go through the expense of buying it. But those are, those are certainly options. Going in with you on a piece of equipment, another option, you know. Just, just like I think, I think Waukesha has got a whole bunch of ladder trucks. We don't have any ladder trucks, you know.
We've got a ninety footer.
A ninety footer? We don't have anything that tall.
You'd be surprised.
Probably I would, yes.
You can't get up next to that house, you go over it with a snorkel and have that.
We also talked briefly, because this is kind of more aggressive plan that's gonna take some time to put together if we decide to go that route, which is the fire prevention district. Couple places in the states have already done fire prevention districts that are working quite nicely. It's kind of a big undertaking to get into, but it might be a direction that we should consider down the road. Because I think that one's a little too aggressive for right now. We gotta figure out how to work together on, on stuff. That one would be a big deal. And then we only had a couple other little things like municipal court, which we don't have. But those were the big ones for now, and I, and I think clearly, from our standpoint, from Vernon, we could stand and use help on police. We're pretty well set up with, with fire, so maybe we can trade off, you know, equipment or people or services somehow, shared services. And of course, DPW, there's, we gotta have all kinds of equipment. And just like fire, not everybody should need every kind of fire truck there is. We got a super duper rough terrain vehicle that, I don't remember how much that one cost us when we bought it, but it was a pretty expensive truck. Yeah. Yeah.
It's not as expensive as a lot of trucks.
Well, no, there's, that's the big banana. Are, does everybody use the same garbage, guys?
Yeah.
And we're advanced.
You know, we used to have a dance, or?
We still have a dance.
We still have a dance, okay.
You're just, you're just signing another five-year contract with Advanced.
Ah, okay.
Well, due to the meeting time, I think, what, before budget time, it'd be nice to meet, date time, date wise. This time, this time of year again, if everybody's starting to work on their budget.
Yeah, you wanna...
We have a first meeting Wednesday.
Well, I think we have something after the elections, like they were talking originally in the other meeting, that'd tee something up for us to, okay, go get some cost information on it or whatever, and then meet again, you know, shortly thereafter, to make some decisions on it, so we could, whoever it is, incorporate it into their, into their budgets.
I think, I'd like to see the April one because there's always a potential for a shift in personnel here, for sure. So do that, and then we can also throw some preliminary ideas.
Me on board with that. April, same as...
April 2021?
Yep.
And do each, do each communities have a list of, like, a prioritized list of what your individual communities think are, you know, the top factors to discuss right away? I mean, it's something that's, I mean, I can tell you what Vernon's is. But, you know, like, from the Village of Waukesha, Town of McGowanago, are there services that you'd like to bring to the forefront as far as the rating system?
I think one of the biggest things we're facing, none of you can help us. The Village of McGowanago does, they loan us their big double diaphragm pumps to bail out Country Plus.
We don't have a formal list of the Village of Waukesha. So if we wanna stay with a Monday night, April nineteenth is a Monday night. If we wanna get it on a calendar. I'm sorry?
When is the Thursday, Wednesday?
Is it the twenty-first?
Then that would be a joint protective services night.
The elected people wouldn't take office until that Tuesday, that third Tuesday after the election. So you'd probably wanna wait till the fourth week, Michael?
Fourth week would be good.
So you think that would be the twenty-sixth, if you wanna stick to a Monday.
It'd be nice to come to that meeting with a prioritize, like Karen said, list of what your, what your community is most interested in pursuing in regard to served services, not so all over the board. If you, if you find that three communities have this particular interest, that would be something to really start concentrating in that area and rather than all scattershot, you know, over the entire spectrum. Because there are a lot of major issues that we can deal with. It's just a matter of coming to some conclusion in regard to satisfaction amongst all of the communities. That does, and I think if we focus on one item to begin with and kind of get the process down, the second and the third one will be so much easier. They'll just, Pavlovian will learn that. I think we all have an idea of what, what we kind of would like to see come out of here, but it'd be nice to get all the three communities together and say, you know, hey, we're in a like mind in regard to this, and why don't we, why don't we start here and work our way down the list, you know? So that, that would be my suggestion on how to start, that's...
Also, like, dates and times, projected schedules, like, when you guys do ditching, brushwork, things like that? Because then we can coordinate something.
Jim, could that crack filling machine that John is contemplating buying, would that be something...
That would be one that we could, you know, consider.
The only problem with crack filling or ditching is most communities are all doing it at the same time and trying to utilize somebody else's equipment isn't always conducive. I could tell you from our DPW department, and I'm sure you all are, just swamped right now with trying to catch up on things that you've, on a list from three years ago.
I got two nice plows out there you can use anytime you want in July, August.
See, and that's something that we actually contract, or we have a contract.
All of it?
All of it.
Yeah.
And we do have our own salt shed that, you know, we put it up. It's part of the state purchasing program, so we realize savings there, but that we just, we don't have the equipment that belongs.
Can we split that? We're approximately fifty-fifty, in-house fifty, a little, little less than fifty percent in-house and fifty percent contracted.
How many miles of road do you have?
About sixty-seven, not lane miles, road miles.
Yeah, I think we're at eighty-one. It's close.
Yeah.
Shifting gears a little bit, we have an observer at the meeting tonight. Should we recognize the scout for earning a badge, I assume?
No, he's not a scout. He just got dragged along by his dad.
Oh, okay.
He did. He chooses to come to meetings, believe it or not.
Is that Mr. Durrell, also?
That is Mr. Durrell, so.
Would you like a list of all our emails also for this? Okay. Okay.
To do is get some lists for you from, I know the DPW, you know, gentlemen, and each of your communities talk quite frequently. And I haven't talked to fire, the fire departments at all. I don't know if, if fire departments are speaking at all, but I know DPWs can provide some comprehensive lists for you also.
I didn't want to really get into it, but there's a lot of conversation amongst fire departments. There's a lot of things going on. There's a countywide shared service agreement that I think twenty-one communities have signed into, others have not. We did not sign the contract because we didn't like the contract language. There was errors and typos. We agree with it and intent and are participating, but Chief Stein has asked me now to pursue that again with the county and see if the lawyer up there will polish that up for us and we'll put our signature on the line. But that's something that, if everybody's aware of that and you're participating in it already, that's a big step in the direction we're talking about. It's, it's, again, it's over and above mutual aid and auto aid agreements.
Is that the agreement that's been facilitated by County Executive Feral?
Kathy Schway from County Emergency.
For any objection to individual, like, say for, for some reason, if the Village of Vernon needs to talk to the Village of Waukesha about an immediate need, is that, is, or if the Town of McGowanago needs to talk to the Village, is there any conflict you feel? Would communities feel offended at all if, if there was an immediate need to their community where one community met with another and no reflection on the overall joint committee? Would there be any objection from individual communities?
I think we probably already do that, but I don't see any reason why we should object to that.
I think...
So dialogue, that's good.
Yeah, I have no problem with, with those communications.
But we probably should come to the respective administrators, so at least the administrators know what's going on. And so, I am, they know what's going on, you know, and stop.
That's good.
It's just that, you know, from a practical standpoint, I can't be trapped at half the time than going out. So it's just nice to have it come through the administration who will keep it all in order and what's going on. And if necessary, giving the plan and things like that. So, that's, that's why I suggest that.